Second.
All right, let's call to order the planning zoning meeting. Can we start with a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Williams?
President.
Mr. Cantor?
Yep.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Ms. Langgallas?
Here.
Mr. Schulman?
Here.
And Mr. Bryce?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. All right, so we will start with review and action on applications. Our first application is two thousand and twenty-five dash sixteen, eight twenty-four referral and special appropriation for the city of Norwalk. Eight twenty-four referral and special capital appropriation relating to school HVAC grant projects, report and recommended action. Alan or Mr. Low, are you here to present on that?
Alan, this is fine. Thank you. As most of the commission commissioner know, that last year, we came for the commission for a special appropriation for grant applications to the state for six projects of a school HVAC improvement project. Typically, the state does not reimburse repair replacement of city school facilities. In terms of like, if you need a new boiler, they don't actually support it in terms of reimbursement. But they came out this grant that actually make these project eligible for, and the cities reimburse, currently reimburse will raise sixty percent. So it's a very significant state contribution to these projects. So the city decided to request six projects. And the under requirements that the city funds the city share as far the grant application process. So when we combine these six projects, about thirty-five, thirty-six million dollars. So the city allocated roughly fifty million dollars last year. It's it's a it's a present surprise, I guess. We we the city was awarded all six projects. So we've been working on it. We've been doing, going through design phase, and we started to go out to bid on these projects. There's still many challenges ahead of us in terms of like, you know, getting because there's some these projects require remediation, some of them require mediation, one time we're gonna do mediation in summertime. In any event, as far as this, we are looking to, we are requesting money for the state share as an interim cash flow purposes. We actually, so when we spend money, we we need to up from the state share. Meanwhile, we have a very aggressive procedure set up that we intend to request reimbursement, interim reimbursement every month, month and a half, so that we're actually not outlaying the money for a long period of time. So really, we're asking for approval of special appropriation so that we can sign contracts and all that. But yet, we're actually not going to borrow, actually, what's it, twenty-one million dollars roughly kind of thing? Really, it's just that we'll use our our share of the money first as we go on, and at the same time, we'll get reimbursements to state. The state has a requirement to hold at five percent at the end of the project. So at the end of the project, we would be short about five million dollars for until the auditing happens. So again, we probably do need some some a little bit of a bonding, but potentially there may be it's it's really a finance department question. Maybe there are other city funding that we can we can temporarily provide to cover that five percent at the end of the project. But overall, it's really a financial procedure thing that we need to approve this to so that we can execute a contract and provide some financial coverage before the state reimburse their share of the the projects.
Alan, this is a an eight twenty-four review. Can I assume then that if we approve it, it then has to go to the council?
The capital special appropriation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Eight twenty-four, just stops here. Assuming that the 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 planning zoning commission approves it, just begin, we we met that requirement of a state statute to get eight twenty-four. And just for the public purposes, the six projects are Nail McSchool, Will Waiton School, Silvermine, Bryant and Mann High School, and Marvin School in Brookside. So those are six six facilities.
Are there other questions?
I'm sorry, the cost breakdown is in my memo, couple how much each one of these projects are.
Do we need to approve each of these individually, or can we do them en masse?
En masse is fine.
Okay, then I'd move we approve the request for the special appropriation for city school HVAC upgrades.
Is there a second? Any seconds? Any, yeah, thanks for pulling up the resolution. Any discussion or questions? Great. Brian, can we do a roll call for this one?
Sure. Mr. Williams?
Happy to see this get done, yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Chapin, can I vote?
Oh, yes, you are seated for this. I apologize, I didn't say that before.
Have to be seated, yes. All right, yes.
Ms. Langgallas?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Right, that's approved.
Thank you.
Much, everybody.
Thanks. Sorry about that, Diana. To to clarify that, you'll be seated for the rest of the meeting, considering we don't have more people show up. Thanks. All right, our next application is two thousand and twenty-five dash oh nine CAM Costa Dofla, twelve Main Street, District One, Block sixty-six, Lot twenty-five. Change the use on second floor of a commercial building to two residential units. Maintain the retail use on the first floor, report and recommended action. I apologize for the mispronunciation of names. Ms. Dofla, are you presenting for twelve Main?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so sorry, this is my first time in a meeting, no commissioners meeting. The first floor is currently being used as a commercial. I believe there is a nail salon, and I believe there was a surgical supply store as well. The second floor was is empty, and we know that Main Street is downtown Norwalk. It's a very popular place. And we see, I saw that there was something that we could have helped to create more more apartments for twelve Main Street. We decided we would do the second floor into two apartments. They were, before they were office buildings, if I'm not mistaken. All we are asking to do is to add a wall to make the bathroom a little bit bigger. The apartment would be there would be no gas stoves. We will be making we'll be just using what we would call, it would be more like a like a studio with a hot plate and microwave and a coffee maker for kind of like the kitchen. And then the rooms that are there, we would have, keep them as is.
Thank you. Did you have anything else for your presentation?
No.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
One question. Is there, is there any designated parking for the units?
There is already parking at at the building.
Is it in back of the building?
Correct.
It's actually on a separate lot, Diana. It's on the adjacent lot, and the application was received before the regulations were amended to require parking in the CD four zone, so there's no parking requirement as a part of this application.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, Amelia. Did you want to present on anything?
No, I think that Anna did a great job covering it. I can pull up the resolution if you guys would like.
Are there any other questions before we pull up the resolution? All right, can I get a motion before we pull up the resolution?
Okay, the resolution, I mean, I'll move.
All right, is that a move to approve, Tammy?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it looks like Diana's seconds.
All right, it's a pretty short resolution. As they'd mentioned, they're only doing some very minor interior work for the conversion, but because it is a change of use in the coastal area management zone, it does require a coastal site plan review. But if there's anything you'd like added or changed, please let me know.
Maybe a question, Amelia. Change the cooking from a hot plate to a regular size oven range stove cooktop. Do they need to get a different permit?
They at most, they would just need an over the counter zoning permit and a subsequent building permit, which they could amend the approval that they get related to this coastal site plan.
Thank you.
Is that something you'd like to see as a condition in here?
No, well, no, I guess not. I don't know. What do you think? I don't know. I'm kind of wondering why they're just doing a hot plate, and I, but that's up to them. I guess it will be less expensive, and maybe the people that live there will be okay with it.
Yeah, that crossed my mind as well. I wasn't sure exactly where to land on that. Darius, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to add that, being that they would already need to get a a different over the counter permit. That's a part of our regulation, so I don't know if adding it here specifically would be useful.
Any other discussion?
Question for Brian. It's not it's not really relevant to my vote on this, and shouldn't be. But under the new zoning, what is permitted there in terms of number of stories?
Twelve Main Street would be, so CD four, so it'd be six and a half stories.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? All right.
Sure. Diana, are you comfortable sitting on this, or do you want to stay off until? Wasn't sure if you hopped on in time.
I can stand.
I think I'm okay.
You you'll, okay. Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? I'm here, Darius, go ahead.
You're muted.
Excuse me, yeah, I'm staying.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallas?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Great. Thank you for your presentation tonight. All right, yeah. Next up is two thousand and twenty-four dash six-six CAM Nicola Vona High Street LLC, eighty Main Street, District One, Block sixty-six, Lot four. Coastal site plan review for the construction of a small multifamily dwelling with a total of five dwelling units within the structure and a total of eighteen dwelling units on the lot, report and recommended action. Who is presenting this project tonight?
I suppose it's me, Lyle Fischel, architect, Stanford, Connecticut. It's a five unit addition to an existing structure at eighty Main Street for Nick Vona. And we are here because we need the CAM review and approval. I can share my screen if you'd like, if anybody would like to, and I'll see what it's all about.
Please, yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay, let's see. Let me make sure, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Might need to blow it up, though, Lyle. Very zoomed out.
Okay. How's this?
That's better.
All right. Yeah, I wanted to show, this is the existing structure up here. There's the existing four units here. Our proposal on the first floor, which would be in the rear to the west side, the street face is up here. This is Main Street here. And so we would have a unit here. This would be a two-bedroom unit. This would be a two-bedroom unit, both accessible from grade level, and then we would have a stairway that went, oh, actually, this is a three-bedroom, excuse me. Then we have a stairway that would go up, and that would lead to the second floor, which would be shown here. Blow that up a little bit to get a better idea. The second floor, the stairway comes up, we have a single bedroom here, we have a two-bedroom here, and this would be our workforce housing unit. This is a one-bedroom back here. The elevations would be fairly simple and in keeping with all the other development that Nick Vona has done on the property. This is probably not even going to be visible from the street. We do have more development to do on this lot, which will be very visible from the street, and but this is kind of hidden behind the the existing structure. And that's really the the five units that we're talking about. It's two stories. I think Nick could do about ninety units on this property. We're probably only going to get twenty or twenty-four units out of the property. We don't want to achieve the full height, and we don't want to achieve the maximum density. There are some site plans that I don't have access to here, but I know Amelia has been helping us out with this, and I might turn it over to her if she'd like to say something about the property.
Sure. Did you want me to pull pull up the site plan, Lyle?
If you could, yeah, that would be good.
Sure, I have it on the website. So if you could just stop sharing your screen, then I'll
Sure, got it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, can I ask a question? Why do you not want to build out all the way?
That would be a question that would be best answered by Nick, if Nick could reply as the owner. Is Nick there? Can we unmute Nick?
He should be able to unmute himself. Looks like he's added as a panelist.
They had a, they had a problem getting on the computer. They may be on the phone, so it may be a little more difficult for Nick, but, you know, he's doing most of the work himself. This is his his own thing, and, you know, there are limits to what he wanted to create here. At one time, he tried to sell the property to a large developer. I believe there were cars involved, but I'm not sure about the details on that. But that deal fell through. Nick wanted to just say, I'm going to take this on myself, and so, you know, there are limits when you're not dealing with the large developers with the large firms that do that type of work.
Thank you.
So this is the lot. We do plan to do a large building here, beautiful building that will have street front. We are providing parking per the regulations here, even though we did not need to provide parking. We know that people are going to need a place to park. This is the five unit that we're talking about. This is nine units that is under construction right now, previously approved. This is a storefront here on the property. And this is the existing residential four unit. We have developed the property, so we have plenty of green space. We'll have green space back here, we'll have green space here, we'll have green space and you know, a general recreation area here. And this is where the next building will go, which we will bring in front of you when we get those plans together.
Am I correct that there are five units and two of those units are one-bedroom?
I, you know, yeah, I get confused myself. I believe that you are correct.
Okay, thank you. Brian, does, is is our regulation silent on the size of the affordable unit?
So so there's no size minimum, but it's in keeping with the rest of the units that are being developed. So for example, you can't come in and build like nine two-bedroom units and then build a studio and say my workforce unit is the studio. It has to be in keeping with the rest of the development.
Okay, and in this case, it's it's one of two one-bedroom units, and that's acceptable.
Right. And the reason why you're seeing this five-unit addition and you did not see the nine unit that's next to it is because the CAM line literally runs right in between the two buildings.
Oh, okay.
And now that the lots have been merged, the CAM, that it would encompass the entire property. So if they were to do work anywhere on the property, it would now be subject to a coastal site plan review.
Right. Thanks, Amelia.
And I'm pretty sure that they were two two-bedroom units, weren't there? They were all two-bedroom units except for the one-three bedroom?
That's right. I think that was the breakdown, two two-ones, two-twos, and one-three.
No, I thought there were twos and threes.
I can open up.
Bring up the drawing that the
Yeah, I can open up that plan again.
Site plan name. If you could, yeah.
Yeah. See, here we go. All right, so a two. This is a two-bedroom here on the ground level. This is a three-bedroom on the ground level. And then on we go to the second floor. We've got a one-bedroom, a one-bedroom, and a two-bedroom. So did everybody count that?
Two. Got it.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to clarify, I didn't say it before, but Anna is seated for the whole meeting. I see that she's frozen at the moment, but hopefully has heard me. Are there, Amelia, do you want to present on anything else?
Um, sure. Well, so the property is probably about eight or nine hundred feet from any coastal resources, so I think that there are, there's no potential adverse impacts to this project. I think it is consistent with the CAM Act goals and policies. It is just, you know, a few zoning compliance issues that can be addressed prior to issuing the zoning permit, which are outlined in the condition, but otherwise, I think the application is consistent with CAM.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, I see Tammy seconded. Can we pull up the resolution?
Can I make a comment on the one about the shrubs?
I don't know. Is that fourteen?
Uh, yes. Is there any provision for planting trees instead of just shrubs, if there's any open space?
There's a provision for planting trees in the parking area, but this is specific, the shrubs specific to facade requirements.
Okay. I didn't see anything about the trees in the resolution. Do we need that in there?
It is in section four point three point twelve point C for the parking area. It's outlined in there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I had a similar thought, I guess, again, to me that. And I did look at that earlier. It is pretty specific about how the parking lot should look.
It's serious.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion about the resolution?
No, I find it to be very thorough.
Agreed. All right, it looks like unfortunately Anna dropped, but can we do a roll call? I think we still got it. So, yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallas?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
It is approved.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight. All right. Our next application is two thousand and twenty-four dash thirty-two. Special permit for Angela Valentine at five BlackBerry Lane, District Five, Block forty-five, Lot one thirty-four. Proposed rest home use, report and recommended action. Just as a first, before we jump into that, I did have an opportunity to catch up on both meetings that included this discussion. I know I wasn't able to partake last time, but I have since caught up on all of those. On a similar note, say it again?
I was saying, me too. I missed last week or two weeks ago, or whenever that was. What is time?
Were you able to catch up on the meeting?
Yes, yeah, I watched the video.
Okay, wonderful. Has anyone not been able to catch up, just to make sure we have a quorum on this?
Yeah, I guess the only question is if we want to try to wait for Anna to come back, or it's up to you.
So I see that we have two public hearings next. Is it possible for us to move this item till after the public hearings? That way we can do those continuously, and then
Yeah, I think that's fine, since it's the hearings closed, so it's specifically you guys discussing and and making a potential action.
Okay, any opposition to to making that change? Great. So let's move on to the public hearings. So the first public hearing we have is two thousand and twenty-four dash sixty-seven. Special permit, Temple Shalom of Norwalk, Inc., two fifty-nine Richards Avenue, District Five, Block sixty-three, Lot one hundred, one hundred and thirty. Proposed Child Daycare Center with a existing religious facility, public hearing, report and recommended action. I'll give the overview for how folks can participate in a public hearing just before we open up that component. But for those from the public who are here to wish to speak, we start with the presentation, and then we will turn it over to your comments. So to start, who's here to present on behalf of the organization? Great, Miss Cohen, please go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. We have a daycare center going on under an exempt license at Temple Shalom for the last twenty-eight years. And we are going for a licensing application with the Office of Early Childhood at this moment. And part of the process is for zoning to give us approval to have this daycare center in the area. We have always, you know, taken children in the area into our daycare center. We you know, we are always very much having a great reputation in that area. And we have actually had many of our residents around the synagogue. And um we have actually had many of our residents around the synagogue who have signed off in, in our certified letter. Um, having their children in the area. We just want to continue what we've been doing for all these years. We are not changing anything. Um, we are just providing um quality childcare for all denominations, just because we're in a, a synagogue. We, we do take all denominations and we want to continue um our services. So we can now apply for maybe grants and, and increase some of our um input to upgrade what we do.
Ms. Cohen, uh, I don't um fully understand the difference between what you're currently doing uh and what you wanted to do.
Well, we were currently doing an exempt religious um, it's the, you know, childcare center. Um, eh Larry Caffaro came with Rabbi and I up to uh New Haven to put into place the religious exemption for childcare center. And, you know, at that point, we were doing uh, we were doing part-time childcare. When the market uh changed and we decided that many Norwalk families were seeking to have full-time childcare, we changed our hours. And in that change, um, the Office of O, of Early Childhood decided that because we quote changed our hours, that we needed to go for licensing. And at this point, they have asked us to do that. So that's the difference. Basically, that was the change. Um, I think it's a great thing for us. We've always wanted to be uh licensed so that we can apply for grants and we can take on um uh care for kids and, and really, it, you know, involve a lot of different types of families from Norwalk. Um, but because of our exempt licensing, we were not able to do that. So uh, that's basically it. We went from part-time to full-time and that changed our exemption.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Cohen. Hi, my son went there to the twos class a long time ago.
I knew we know each other. I saw you. Wow. I knew, I knew, I knew I knew you. Yes.
You really know a lot of people. Um, how does the daycare, um, how is that different from preschool? And are, is it the same pool of children? Are they two separate things?
Same thing. Um, people have a, a choice of what they want to, to do. Um, when we started the full-time care, of course, it was, you know, some people were going back to work, but some weren't. And um, and then the more and more during that time period when the markets were going crazy and, and um, uh, you know, moms were going back to work but couldn't find nannies. It was either a nanny or a daycare. Um, we started to grow. Um, and then we added infants and toddlers when they became pregnant. So the preschool, it, you know, you can't differentiate what preschool is from daycare. Daycare is just longer hours. Um, the children learn the same are our um instruction when they're, you know, very fresh in the morning is more like what you would call preschool. But we ex, you know, we expand our curriculum throughout the full day so we can um, you know, enhance all parts of their day. It's a long day for them. I absolutely feel that way. Um, but we've become the second parents to them in this day and age, the way things have, have changed. Um, we went to full-time back in two thousand fifteen and, and we're in two thousand twenty-five. Life has changed.
And Ms. Cohen, the licensing is the same. There's no licensing for preschool. It's just licensed for a daycare center at different sizes and different agents, right?
Right. It, I mean, it's the same. I still offer part-time ju, uh, positions, uh, part-time programs for people who don't go to work and just want a half a day or a five-day week program. I offer everything that you can imagine that to fit parents' needs. We have not uh changed anything, but just have increased what we've added.
Will there be more students and staff with this change?
Not, not how it's been since in the last ten years. Uh, it, you know, we're doing the same thing that we've done for the past ten years. Um, when we increased our hours then, it's just a matter of picking up, and we added rooms, I have to say, ten years ago, but uh drop-off and pickup are exactly the same. And um as the traffic uh engineer had, had seen, it does not impact. There's a, there's like a two-hour pickup or a two-hour drop-off and, and parents are really on their own schedule. So we, we don't have any impact on the community um to, to have any issues off of Richards Avenue. Um, it's very quiet, the way pa, parents, you know, do their drop-off and pickup.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
So I have a couple que.
Oh, uh, you froze just as you started, Diana.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we have you. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So Stacy, how many children do you have enrolled now?
Approximately seventy, uh, seventy children, but there are, you know, family, you know, older and younger families, let's say, you know, maybe between sixty and sixty-five families.
So I did see the licensing application, which was very extensive that you filled out. How many children will you be licensed for? Is there a limit on the license?
Um, the license, I think, is for eighty, but I think typically, you know, uh, yeah, that's about all I can do. I think right now, um, I'm actually full, but when you talk about families with kids in an infant program or a three-year-old program, it's approximately sixty to sixty-five families, but our license will go for eighty. Eighty children. And that means because they come at different times of the, the week. So, you know, I can have a Monday, Wednesday, Friday child and a Tuesday, Thursday child. That's a totally different family.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Brian, did you have uh anything that you wanted to add for this application?
Um, nope, uh, other than it's, you know, fairly straightforward. I wish we could have issued this over the counter since they've kind of already been doing it. Um, but I wasn't able to find, you know, the record, so I'm like, let's just do this via the special permit process. We'll get it all legalized that way. Um, it was all referred, the traffic report was referred to T M P. They had no issues, no concerns. Um, uh, and that's mostly it on uh staff's uh comments.
Great. Uh, anything else before we open up the public hearing? All right, so uh if you would like to comment on this application, uh, please uh raise your hand and Brian will give more instructions on that front momentarily. Um, this is an opportunity for you to uh provide comments and ask questions. Um, and the applicant will respond at the end. Uh, it is uh not a dialogue, but a chance for you to share uh um your comments and, and questions. Um, you only have one opportunity to speak. Um, you are not limited on time, but we ask you that you be uh both concise and polite. Um, lastly, please start with your full name and address as you begin. Um, Brian, do you mind uh iterating the instructions for uh, uh, raising the hand?
Sure. So if anyone would like to speak on this application, you could just click the raise your hand tool. It's the little icon at the bottom of your screen. You just click that once and then I can bring you over to speak. If you're dialing on a phone, which I don't see anybody who is, but you'd hit star nine. One more shot. Just hit the, if you would like to speak, it's raise your hand tool, bottom of your screen. You would click that once. Seeing none, Mr. Bryce.
Great. Well, thank you. Um, Ms. Cohen, do you have any other comments?
No, um, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Of course. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
All right. Is there a uh motion for this application?
Motion to approve.
All right, Nick is moved. Tammy is seconded. Can we uh pull up the resolution?
Yeah, and then just quick conference to close the, close the hearing, correct?
Oh, and close the hearing. Yes, thank you. Uh, and Anna and Diana are both seated for the uh duration of the meeting. Uh, Anna, I don't know if you heard me say that before, uh, but wanted to share that.
I did not, and my internet appears to have improved, so I think I'm good.
Okay. Anyone have any um alterations to the conditions? Okay. Hearing none, uh, can we do a roll call for this?
For? Ms. Tebaschnik?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Right, it is approved.
Thank you.
I said, yeah.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated.
Thanks, Stacy.
Yeah.
Bye.
All right. Our uh next public hearing is uh twenty twenty-five dash oh five R. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, zoning regulation text amendments to Article Four and Nine regarding tobacco and vape shop uses. Public hearing, report and recommended action. Uh, Brian, are you presenting this one?
Great. Yes, give me one second. I'll pull up the memo.
Sure thing.
All right, so if uh you all recall, vape shops has kind of been a controversial uh use.
I'm sorry, Brian, can you slow that up?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
No problem. It's been a controversial use and the, the police department's been having some issues and the city's in the process of working on an ordinance uh to better rein in some of the issues that the city's experiencing with these uses. So uh staff is proposing what are three amendments to the zoning regulations to assist um and kind of get out ahead of how that ordinance um will, will take shape. Um, so the first change is uh to Article Nine to modify the definition of a vape shop, um, which will incorporate both tobacco um shops and vape shops essentially as one use. And then it's essentially going to get rid of the um, the floor area requirement which we used. We kind of tried that out when we did the zoning regulation rewrite, saying that if you devote twenty-five percent of your floor area to the sale of uh vape or e-nicotine systems, that you'd be considered a vape shop. Um, staff was having some issues with uh determining what twenty-five percent of the floor area would be. It was difficult to kind of enforce that. Um, so we are scrapping that and just really saying if you sell vape or tobacco products, you will fall under this definition. Um, there are some uses that the state statutes have that um permit certain establishments to sell vape and tobacco products and not be considered one of these. So these are listed here. So um gas stations, uh lottery sales, pharmacies, uh, people who have grocery store beer permits, uh manufacturing of hemp consumables, manufacturing of drugs, medical devices, or cosmetics, wholesaler of drugs, medical devices, or cosmetics, and then food warehouses. Um, they all are essentially exempt because the state um allows them to have the ability to get one of uh the e-nicotine um licenses from the state. So they would not be considered vape shops, but any other uh use who comes in and says this is the primary use of the property would be considered a tobacco slash vape shop. Uh, the next change is then to modify the defin, definition of retail and personal service. And what this is just going to say is it'll delete a reference to tobacco and related products that allows them to be considered retail and specifically state that those are not um tobacco, um, not retail uses, excuse me. And then lastly would be to change in Article Four, the use table um to make uh vape shops only a special permit use with additional limitations within the C D three C zone. Uh, and the limitations that we are proposing to apply would that they cannot be located within uh one mile from another uh vape shop. Um, you'd have to have additional signage on the, the door. Um, uh, well, these ones technically already exist, but it'd be adding in the, the tobacco uh language within the front. Um, and then that they have to obtain their state license prior to um getting a C O Z Z from, from uh zoning in the building department.
Brian, why is it only for uh C three, three C?
Uh, and so it's, it's the same zone that allows for, it's kind of like modeled after the dispensary language, the cannabis dispensary language. Um, so it, we essentially just mirrored it off of, off of that.
Gotcha. I didn't realize dispens, dispensary not allowed in C D four.
Right.
Brian, can I ask about um condition or the uh limitation for shall not display any products within ten feet of the facade? Is that speaking about like within ten feet inside or within ten feet outside?
Yeah, it'd be inside. So you'd have like the, the glass or like the windows of the building and it would say that the, all your products have to be stored ten feet away from that.
Ten feet behind the glass, essentially?
Yeah.
Okay.
Brian, that, that particular requirement, um, I mean, I, 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 I understand that um we can't do anything um in, in, in terms of shutting down existing uh stores who were uh, um, practicing according to law. Uh, but can um, we insist on the existing stores um also uh being required to uh display products uh at least ten feet uh from uh the uh, uh, front of the store?
Yeah, so as long as they're considered to be a vape shop, um, we, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Even if they're in existence today. Oh, sorry, Richard.
Yeah, as far as I know, that this, this reg exists as it's, as it's written, that condition already exists. The issue was whether or not they were actually considered a vape shop or if they were just considered to be retail sales. So if they were retail sales, then we can't enforce this condition, but if they're considered a vape shop, then we could.
So if they were considered retail sales today, after we pass this, they would be con, theoretically considered tobacco vape shop and therefore this is applicable?
Um, it, you know, it creates like a, a non-conforming situation technically where like if they had a floor plan that was approved, I, I don't know if we can go and tell them to, to move it back.
Watch them.
Because it'd be like, we're, we're now redefining what you are and now you need to abide by these new conditions which you about your permit.
And a remedy for that would be through an ordinance, right, in order for it to be immediately applicable? Or am I misremembering the, the route for that? And no worries if you don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
Did we get, um, I think at one point we were going to get like a list or a map of all the current like approved vape shops, unapproved vape shops that are known to zoning, like to get a sense of this and, uh, because I think also there was the issue that, that I think to the public, it, it, it looks like there's just more and more and more, uh, but that I think most of them started operating before we even had a regulation.
Yeah, yeah, I know staff was putting um together the list. Um, essentially what this reg would do is now because any business that would be solely selling tobacco and vape because of the one-mile prohibition, if you remember when we were doing cannabis, the one-mile prohibition pretty much or minimum requirement between the distance of them only meant that like three could be located in Norwalk. So at this reg would almost mean that no more vape shops could open in, in the city, based on what exists today.
And Brian, you said it, places that are only selling tobacco and vapes. I thought it was any place that's not on that list on the earlier page that is selling tobacco or vape. And it could be along with other things, like it could be a bodega that also sells.
Right, so if you have one of these. Right, so if you have one of these state licenses, you're also allowed to sell vape and not be considered a vape shop.
But anybody that doesn't have one of these licenses, if they're selling vapes or tobacco at all amongst whatever else they might be doing is now considered a tobacco vape shop.
Yes.
And they can't do that and open within a mile of another one.
Correct. My, my presentation.
Are there any other questions for Brian? All right, we will move on to the public participation component. So for those that are here and would like to comment or ask questions as it relates to this application, now is your time to provide those comments and questions. We, our staff will respond at the end. So you only have one opportunity to speak. We ask that you be concise and polite. And please start with your full name and address. Brian, can you share how folks can participate?
Sure. If you'd like to speak regarding this application, you use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. You would click that once, and if you're dialing it on a phone, you would hit star nine. And once again, it's just the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. You would click that once. Seeing none, Mr. Bryce.
All right. Brian, did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it from me.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any other questions before we go for a motion? All right, is there a motion for this resolution? I see Anna's moving. Is that a move to approve? Yes, okay. Lou is seconded. All right, can we bring up the resolution?
Sure. And I should, should have said this earlier, but this was referred to all adjacent communities. It was referred to Westcog who did not provide any comments, so just so our bases are covered there for, with our referrals.
Thank you. Discussion of the resolution. All right, Brian, can we do a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Let him down, yes.
Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Right, that is approved. Now I'll jump in. I think we skipped Michelle's, the affordable housing plan.
Oh, we did, as it was after Five Blackberry Lane, so.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay, should we continue to do those in order? Or should we do the affordable housing plan amendment and then Five Blackberry Lane? The applicant for Five Blackberry Lane is not here tonight and there's no ability for them to come, we close the hearing, right?
Correct.
Okay, so unless there's opposition, let's have Michelle go, so that way she's able to sign off hopefully afterwards. So the next application then is 2025-13 POCD, Planning and Zoning Commission, Amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development to Adopt the Affordable Housing Action Plan, Report and Referral to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Michelle, are you presenting this?
Sure. But too much to present, as some of you may remember, there was the joint meeting of Common Council and Planning and Zoning on January 30th that presented the affordable housing plan. So next steps were to bring it to you guys. Happy to answer any more questions. There were some edits put into the plan based off of that joint meeting that was implemented. It was a handful of things, nothing too major. So this is just a formal referral from you guys to send it over to the ECD and Common Council for their vote, and then I'll come back to you probably April or May on your agenda for public hearing and formal adoption of the POCD for the plan.
Michelle, I had one comment on it. The, I had commented on the facility at Forty South Main and I, I, I saw that there is a reasonably extensive discussion of, of that facility later in the report. But earlier in the report, where you offer a list of organizations and you don't say it's complete, but you do offer a list of organizations like Pacific House and the Norwalk Shelter and a number of others. Forty South Main hasn't been inserted there and it, it just seems to me it ought to just be inserted there as one of the facilities that provides very, you know, reasonably priced housing to people coming out of homelessness.
Yeah, we can certainly do that and add that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion for approving it as amended?
Um.
Looks like Anna has moved.
I'll second.
Lou is second. Do you mind pulling up the resolution? If we need to pull up the resolution?
I'll put up the memo, but it's not necessarily a resolution. It's, and I'm not sure usually the protocol for like the referral from one committee to the next if we need a vote.
Oh, okay.
I think, just, I would do a vote just to be safe, Michelle, so we're not coming back against that, yeah.
Yeah, you can say we unanimously or whatever the number of people is approved, moving it on.
Okay, can we do this with a show of hands? Okay, all those in favor? Diana might be frozen. All those abstaining? All those opposed? All right, I believe it passes even with Diana frozen, right? There was five, five yeses, so.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, there we go. That makes it six. Thank you, Diana. All right, so the next item on our agenda is 2024-32 Special Permit for Angela Valentine, Five Blackberry Lane, District Five, Block Forty-Five, Lot One Thirty-four, Proposed Rest Home Use, Report and Recommended Action. I believe at this point.
I had, I had made a motion at the last meeting and I would, I'd like to repeat that motion, but also add something to what I had said. And with, with, with respect to Tammy, and that is that my concern regarding transportation was only taken in one direction and that was the folks living at, at this facility of just as great, maybe even greater concern are those people who want to visit those living at the facility. You know, this is not a, a high-end facility with taking in wealthy people. And it may well be that the folks wanting to visit may not have automobiles or other means to get the, to get to the facility. And without a public transit that is reasonably close, they may not be able to travel to the facility in the same way that the people living there may not be able to get out or get out as often as they'd like because of the lack of public transportation. And to the motion, my motion for those of you who don't remember or weren't there was that we deny this on the basis of the fact that it is not convenient to public facilities and public transportation.
And then I wanted to, I don't know, hopefully Diana's there. I turned off her video hoping that her connection would improve if I did that. She had wanted clarification on the septic plan. So the applicant submitted a, it's a proposed septic plan. And speaking with the health department, what that means is they have an existing septic plan in place for the, that, that serves the house. If that were to fail, then they would have to install the proposed septic plan. But per the health department, the design flow for the existing use as a single-family house with an accessory apartment is actually higher than a rest home with an accessory apartment, so that the design flow would actually decrease based on the proposed use, meaning just a long way to say that the existing septic system is adequate for the proposed use and that the, the proposed septic system would obviously be installed should it fail.
I, I watched the videos that I missed. It was a little hard to follow and I feel very much on edge about this, this project. I would have appreciated having that in writing from the, the subject people and specifically what, what they were looking at with that decision, because there have been so many floor plans. When I look at the most recent floor plan, it only has one bedroom for the caregivers, but my understanding is this is a family of five. And then in the special applic-, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, for, I didn't want to miss out that point, so. And because we can't introduce new information at this point, the testimony provided by the applicant that the health department's approval was based on the caretaker's quarters having two bedrooms was correct. Meaning that health department signed off on a two-bedroom caretaker's quarters and then the rest home as proposed.
And the, the subject people signed off on the same thing?
Right, that's the health department, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That would be a total of five bedrooms, not six.
Correct.
Five total.
Correct.
Nick, do you have a question?
No, I'm just trying to keep math here because the math keeps changing on this application and I'm just like, wait. It's like, wait, there's two bedrooms.
Yeah, there are three bedrooms and then the caretaker's quarters, too.
But, but they're putting five people in the caretaker's quarters, so, or presumably, so, okay, okay.
Which technically you can do.
Sure.
Right, you could have two, a couple and three kids in a room, you could. And I'm looking at, I'm looking at the floor plan and I'm thinking too, like, if this wasn't a rest home, could eight people, you know, in a family be living here? And it looks like yes to me. And like, the health department said they, it would have been fine or it was fine under the prior use.
The question I.
So is there still, is the, is Lou's motion still open? Is that where we're at?
It hasn't been seconded.
Yeah.
It, it's been moved, but not seconded.
Gotcha.
Is there a second before we continue discussion just to decide if we're moving forward on this motion? Nick has seconded, okay. I did have a, a question. I, I wish I was able to participate when hearing was open, but maybe to, to staff to see if, because I think this is on use. Does the caretaker's quarters for the, for the rest home use have to be classified as an ADU? Like, is that the, the way it has to be classified in order to have dual uses inside of this property?
I don't think so. I think it, it's almost acting as accessory to the rest home use.
Okay.
But I think in your memo didn't it say that, that it, once it becomes a rest home, it can't have an ADU? That use actually goes away.
Have to be speci-, are specifically accessory to single-family residences.
So that's why they can't have the caregiver's quarters and then also a one-bedroom apartment like they used to have.
Right.
But they can have the caregiver's quarters in, in the same structure as the rest home use?
Right.
Okay, so in, in a sense, it's losing its ADU status? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And do, do you know offhand if the caretaker's quarters needs to be separated from the patient's quarters? Like that was something I'd missed in, in all of the testimony, if those needed to be separate items. I'm sorry if you don't know, just.
Meaning like, like physically separated?
Yeah, it seems in the floor plan that there's like emphasis on them being like completely separated spaces, like separate entrances and separate like kitchens, living, bathroom space.
Um, I don't think, I don't, we, we don't have a reg that says it has to be or integral or, or separate, and I don't believe statute speaks on it either.
Okay, I imagine if, if there is such a requirement, it might be through another agency because they do have other approvals that they would have to seek. Okay, I think that answers the questions that I, that I can ask. Are there any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, can we pull up the resolution?
All right, we got a second. All right, you're right.
Yes, yep, Nick seconded and Lou moved, yep. And the hearing's already closed, so I don't need to do that.
So this was, I believe where we had left off at the last meeting. Changes based on. I mean, the first one might just be to, to remove one since that's not necessarily true.
And I think this was.
I mean, it's a little truish. Maybe it doesn't matter.
I think it's true in the sense that we don't have documentation. This is all still sort of this one said to Brian, who said to us.
And it's also true in the sense of, maybe I'm holding this wrong, it's like, basically the system has to fail. And then they have to deal with it, right? Like, which doesn't seem like a great, like.
Yeah, like based on the use, the existing system is compliant.
And that would be.
I think, I think we ought, we ought to remove it. You know, thinking strategically and, and being as fair as possible to the folks who are proposing this. If this is going to go to court, we don't want to have relied on information that we can't support. And I'm not sure that we can support that.
I I don't know how we can say that the size and the width of the road is not adequate for emergency vehicles because it is currently adequate. Right? And they're, they're not making the house bigger.
And, and, again, I, I would agree with you that that should come out because we don't have any testimony from experts. Because we don't have any testimony from experts uh, that indicate that that's true, that, that is the opinion of some members of the commission for sure. But, uh, we don't have, uh, expert opinion that, uh, confirms that. I'm, I, I mean, I'm comfortable hanging my hat on what is currently number two. And let, let the chips fall where they may.
Well, I just wanted to say, and, and, oh, it's gone already.
It can be put backwards.
It's, it's a little bit more than, than my opinion. I, I didn't mean that emergency vehicles were incapable of getting up and down or getting in and out of that street. Um, one of the issues that we're supposed to be looking at in terms of a special permit is the effect on the neighborhood. And while the fire truck and the ambulance and the police cars could certainly get in and out of that street, it would be with extreme inconvenience. I'm going to use that word, although that's not what I wanted to say to the neighbors, because there's no question that the vehicles would have to be going into neighbors' properties to be able to turn around, in my opinion. But I'm not married to the language and if, if that needs to come out, then so be it.
Not necessarily, I'm not necessarily speaking of that, but just sharing my thoughts here. You guys know like CD PAP, Community Direct, Community, uh, Consumer Directed Personal AIDS, um, where basically somebody who needs an aid or help in the home can hire their own person, which could be a family member who's already sort of helping them for, for free, right? Any of us can, the elderly or disabled and say the state is going to pay this person that's going to live with me. Well, I know that's not what's happening here. But it seems like this is a very large house. They're not adding bedrooms. And they're, you know, two adults caring for three elderly or disabled people in their home that in this case are not related to them, but I, I think of Charlie and the Chocolate Factory and like, right, there were, there were three people in that bed. Um, I think three or four. Um, and so I have a hard time. I have a hard time seeing why this, uh, should not be allowable. I look at the driveway. I drove by the driveway. I had concerns, but you could, you could move a family of eight into this house right now and they would have to use the driveway in that way. So just, just wanted to put that out there. I'm sorry if it's not the appropriate time.
It's perfectly appropriate.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, uh, further, I, I agree with your sentiment that like this does feel like an appropriate use of, of this house. And, you know, certainly this application's had its frustrating moments, uh, some communication issues, um, and uh, some details that took a little bit to, to come to light. Um, you know, I would like to see, you know, some of the bedrooms rearranged a bit so they had more space in the caretaker's quarters, but if the caretaker's quarters don't need to be separate from uh, the patient's area, then you know, maybe there's, there's an opportunity to address that concern there. Yeah, that's, I guess, all the comments I have. Does anyone else have any, uh, comments or questions or alterations to the?
One more, one more. I thought that I had as I was watching the last video, uh, that was so much fun. Was that I'm pretty sure if, uh, if these folks had been able to hire one of our two favorite land use attorneys, there wouldn't be a question here. And I know that's, you know, counterfactual, but throwing that out there.
And then just, just to Anna's uh, point earlier too. Per zoning regulations, if the applicant had not gone to the state and asked for this to be sort of designated as a rest home, they reasonably could have three unrelated people in the house that they just happen to take care of, um, which would be perfectly permissible per zoning and would be over the counter, an over the counter zoning permit. Um, it's really just the fact that this is a uh, a rest home use specifically based on, um, the, them going to the state for, for the, for the use.
Are there any other, uh, comments, questions or amendments to the, uh, resolution in front of us? Did we land on where we wanted to with, uh, item one A? I'll take that as a yes. Um, so with that, can we do a roll call?
Sure. So this is, uh, the motion to deny as amended to remove condition one. Uh, sorry, Ms. Lankowski?
No.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
No.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
No.
All right, so that does not pass three to three. Going to take additional motions?
Is there a way is there a way to amend the motion to approve to make some teeth in the three bed utilization of this?
Do you have suggested language in mind, Richard?
Could we say that the number of bed, the number of bedrooms shall be limited to three for rest home tenants and two for caregiver quarters? I don't know if that helps anything. But just to
Like clarifying.
I, I feel like the three is already, I'm not sure how you strengthen the three, but I don't know.
I, I kind of like beds specifically because a bedroom could have more than one bed. Um, but I mean, that's what I would assume would be more specific to the rest home itself and not the.
Understood, yeah. So three beds for the rest home and two bedrooms for the caretaker's quarters?
What happens to that extra bedroom?
Well, they said it was going to be recreational space, one rec, one sort of living recreational space on the rest home side and one recreational space on the caretaker's side. And we know those could have been bedrooms prior to this use change. And they're promising that those will not be bedrooms. Because this is a rest home now, does the fire department have the ability or zoning have the ability to inspect unlike traditional single families? Like if the neighbors thought that all of a sudden there were seven bedrooms or something?
Yes, so, um, zoning would continue to inspect based on like a complaint, um, system, but the fire marshal uh, would have the ability to inspect, um, but the health department would too. And I'm assuming that the state, because they are licensed through the state, whether it's DPH or Department of Social Services also has, um, inspections that they would conduct.
So we wouldn't have the problem that we currently have with single family houses and over occupancy in terms of gaining access.
Right, right. So I mean, we could say if the fire marshal's going out there, hey, this is the approved floor plan per zoning, um, let us know if anything has changed.
I'm trying to remember the precise conversation from either one or two meetings ago where the applicant was open to zoning coming in and inspecting the property. Has it opened or?
They were not willing to, to do that.
Oh, okay. I misheard then.
They said yes.
I thought they said yes as well, but.
So, so, so we had, we had asked them at that meeting, um, it seemed like they had agreed to it. Um, so we reached out to the applicant, um, who then, uh, said that they had spoken with an attorney and that they, they would not be willing to, to do that. Um, for whatever, I don't think it was related to that. Could be completely just based on privacy and respecting their privacy, but sure.
Um, Richard, is, uh, number two, address your concern?
Yeah, we're going to change, um, bedrooms to beds for the, um, caretaker's quarters as well.
I, I don't, I don't think so, Richard, because if they have three kids, and I, I don't want to use, I'd, I'd prefer to use bedrooms for the caretaker's quarters if their family's going to move in there and then have the rest home be specific to, to beds.
All right. And then the last thing that, that, um, I was concerned about was that language that was in the license from the state indicating that it was financially viable for six units. I think that wha- what's going to go to the state? Just an approval or is this whole resolution going? I mean, in other words, what I'm saying is, is the state going to know that this is limited to three bedrooms?
So we can attach this to the state approval. There, I, I'm, I would say that they would get a copy of the special permit approval and then they would get a copy of the zoning permit approval, uh, when they are asking for a local, uh, the local jurisdiction sign off on the use.
And the zoning permit approval is going to clearly indicate that it's limited to three beds.
Right. And all can do, like, when, so when we put the zoning permit together, one, it'll say that. And then two, it references any sort of commission approvals, um, related to that zoning permit. And all of those are included as part of the, the application or the permit, I should say.
Um, Brian, would it, uh, be appropriate to have as a condition that they need to like bring back some statement from the state saying that they are financially viable at, uh, three beds or at three patients?
Yeah, I think we could put that in, um.
Richard, would that be something you'd be interested in is something for them to bring back to staff to show that in fact they are financially viable at three?
That would be, that would be good for me, yeah.
Yeah, that was a concern I, I, I shared as well was the financial viability and yeah, wish we had a clearer answer on that. So I'm happy to address that in a condition as well.
I'd appreciate that as well. Can you remind us, was that document in the original application? That one that said six, I remember seeing it at the beginning, but I'm just trying to find it now.
So.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
It was definitely early on. I remember seeing that as well.
It's all in that package. The final decision of the Department of Social Services. So can they get a letter from the Department of Social Services?
Like an amendment.
And mending their final decision or whatever that, that although it is licensed for up to six, three is also financially feasible or something?
With all due respect, financial viability is not one of the criteria we use in approving a special permit.
True.
That's true, but that is the licensing conditions that came with this application.
And that's the reason why some of us, and I think perhaps neighbors also worry that they could decide to expand to six, because they do have the room. And if it's only financially viable at six, then they might be sort of forced to expand to six. Is my right, Richard?
Yes. Absolutely. That's absolutely right.
But, but in the item above, you had, you've limited them to only three.
But that's what they said they wanted. And to me, it, I don't think it fits in the neighborhood, but three is better than six. And three is what they asked for.
The way I saw the financial viability, because I, I agree with you Lou, that, uh, we, we don't have anything explicit in our, uh, special permit that says that financial viability is required for a project. Um, but the, the way I saw it here was, um, like through what I heard from, um, Richard's, uh, questions in the prior two meetings. It, it sounded that it was coming from a, a concern of, um, like them having the, uh, resources to take care of, um, the, the wellbeing of, of the patients that are in the facility. And I do think that's one of the things that we can, uh, um, condition on is, you know, as we're looking out for the like public health, safety and welfare. I think that's one of the components of the special permit process, um. And so that's kind of how I was viewing the financial viability piece was that it was like ensuring that they are, um, positioned with resources to be able to tend for these patients who are, uh, not able to tend for themselves.
You know, we, we, we may not have the authority to talk about financial viability, but the state does. Um, the state has made it, I mean, we're entitled as commissioners to read the newspaper and listen to the news and the state has made it crystal clear that they are not interested in having any more bankrupt or underfunded nursing homes or, or care facilities. So when they say in the licensing that is given to us as an exhibit in this application, that they find it to be financially viable with six beds, um, I think that that's a condition that the state is giving and then we're supposed to be approving it based on what the application, what the applicant has asked for and what we're willing to give. So I, I think it's, it's perfectly appropriate, um, that if nothing else, we ask that the, um, uh, permit that the state gave be modified to reflect three beds. Otherwise, as Anna said before, um, if they don't find it viable, they're going to say, okay, we need to make it six. And that's what our state permit says.
Thank you, Brian, for drafting live as we're discussing. Is there, uh, any, uh, comments on the item, uh, highlighted in yellow?
Is it complies with the license permit? That language, I'm not sure if that's.
License or permit, maybe? Would that clarify it?
No, I think it's, it's the, the I don't think that's what it is. I think it's the, that the final decision that the Department of Social Services final decision could be or can be amended or that they've done an analysis and three is also financially viable or something like that. I do think we, we have asked a lot of other applicants about like their plans for things to kind of suss out whether something seems feasible. You know?
Yeah, as it relates to solar, we've also talked about, um, maintenance plans for things for services offered at senior housing, right? Those are three that came to mind immediately, but.
Yeah. It is, I mean, I, I agree with Richard. If, if that financial, like, what I can't tell is if that financial feasibility thing, like, how, how much weight does that hold? I think they had to get that in order to buy the house at whatever price they got for it or something. So like, I don't know how, I don't know how important or how meaningful that document or that financial analysis is, but if it is accurate and important, this would be concerning to me. accurate and important, this would be concerning to me.
Is there anything else on item three? All right. Keep going down. Um, for item four, um, I think that's, oh yeah, good, go ahead. March.
A little lag time there.
Um, for item four, I think that's referring to the room that was labeled eventually as the rec room. Um, personally, I would like to see it turned into a bedroom, but recognize that we need to get um, the health department to sign off on that because I would be adding another bedroom to the caretaker's quarters, so we would need to get their assessment on the sewer. Um, am I reading that correctly that this is referring to the, what they've now labeled as the rec room off the dining room?
The rec room on the, on the rest home side that they're referring to.
Uh, this one, I believe to remove access to the bedroom, the dining room and the big room. So this was the, what's labeled as uh, recreation room in the rest home portion. Um, so yeah, I, you, my concern when I drafted this was that that kind of looked like a bedroom or could be a bedroom. Um, it, I mean, per the plans, it's labeled as a recreation room, so we don't have anything to say that it's, it's not that. Um, so, yeah, this condition technically isn't needed. Um, based on the floor plan saying that's a recreation room and not a bedroom.
I assume the neighbors are gonna be watching like hawks and if they see four patients.
I don't.
There would be an inspection.
I don't mind this condition, but uh, because I, I wouldn't mind the caretaker's quarters, like, having another bedroom for their family to use, um.
Yeah, so, so.
But.
On uh, on the floor plan that you, so I, I think we should put a condition that the floor plan that we had that showed a recreation room in the caretaker's quarters is the one that's gonna be become a bedroom and that's what the health department approved as being a bedroom.
Okay.
I don't think this condition is needed, number four, because this was removing access to the recreation room of the rest home portion. Um.
Okay.
So, that access doesn't need to be removed because we are going under the assumption that that will remain to be a recreation room. Um, but we, we do technically would need to modify the floor plan to say that the recreation room of the caretaker's quarters is a bedroom. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think I was okay with this condition as is like so long as they also got sign off on the septic usage, so that way it added another, like a third bedroom to the caretaker's quarters. Because I, I have a suspicion that that's how it's going to be used. Um, or uh, I guess to your point, um, removing, uh, removing this item as it's no longer permanent because it's just being classified as a, as a rec room. But I think in either case, they would still have to come in front of us if they did want to convert that into a third bedroom for the caretaker's quarters. It just feels like a missed opportunity there for having a bit more living space for the caretakers.
Okay, so then we can see.
I'm not sure how others feel on, on this one.
Yeah, I think, I see.
So we don't actually have a floor plan that's accurate still. The revised floor plan from two nineteen shows, um, still shows the two rec rooms and really the rec room on the caregiver side should be labeled a bedroom.
Correct.
And that's why we have that, we have that as a condition, right?
No, we would need to add that in.
I think we should add that as a condition.
Yep. While he's writing that, um, I do see a member of the public has their hand raised. Um, unfortunately, we have closed the public hearing at our last meeting and so uh, there's uh, no public participation on this item.
And we're allowed to do this where, where, I, so I was questioning, should we be denying it based on just solely that we, we still don't have a perfectly accurate floor plan, but this is actually how conditions are sometimes used, correct?
Right, like if you were given a, a site plan review application where it's uh, really, you're you're limited on like what conditions you could put on it. The conditions are for if the condition would put it into an approvable state.
So if we were to deny it based on that, when we could have just added this condition for, that's the type of thing that could get overturned on appeal.
Potentially.
Potentially, theoretically.
On number four, do we need to condition that on health department approval or is that covered by item eight? Because uh, they'll get the, the final bedroom count before they get health department approval.
We could put in there just to be safe, but yeah.
Okay.
Brian, since I had to step away, um, could you please just answer, did the health department opine on the septic? I didn't see it in our um, material today.
Yeah, so we couldn't like submit new documentation to you, so it was kind of confirmation that health department up, the existing septic system that is there is sufficient for the use. Um, they provided a proposed septic system plan should the septic system fail, but um, based on the change in use, the design flow of the proposed use is actually lower than what the existing use of the property um, uses today.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryce, I think that might be best to delete this one just because if it does become a bedroom, now you're bringing back the health department, um.
Yeah, I'm okay with deleting this one because this has been turned into a rest room or covered by four, right?
No, this is a completely separate room. This is the rec room, the rest home portion. This is the recreation room within the rest home.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I will motion to approve.
Anna's motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Anna has seconded. Uh, can we do a roll call or any other discussion uh, before we go to a roll call?
Uh, I'm going to um, vote against uh, this, um, and frankly, I'm happier with voting against it. Um, on um, the basis of a positive approval. Um, because my one and only objection is and has been um, a distance from uh, community facilities and lack of public transportation. It's a little less comfortable with the other things that were on the denial. Um, so I'm a little bit more comfortable in uh, voting against this. Although, you know, I tend to agree with Anna. Uh, we, we can't tell people how to put an application together or who to do their presentation. Um, but um, uh, given all the questions that have been raised about this, uh, an attorney might very well um, have resolved all of these uh, issues that we've all raised, um, well before it came uh, to us. Uh, and it might have been uh, much more clear cut, I think, than it is.
Appreciate that, Lou. Uh, anybody else have a discussion? All right, uh, Brian, can we do a roll call for this?
Sure, so this would be uh, to vote in favor of approving the application. Mr. Rowena?
No.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
No.
Mr. Schulman?
No.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
That is approved, four to three.
Thank you. Um, so going back, trying to figure out where we left off, I think we are now in a discussion as it relates to the zoning regulation amendments relating to the special flood hazard area and coastal area management zone. Um, Brian, I didn't miss anything else on the agenda, right?
No, you're good. Um, making you jump around.
Um, are you presenting on that one?
Yeah, so this is just a preliminary discussion, um. So I, I should have tweeted that Diana pointed out something smart, which was that this doesn't impact the CAM zone, this is specific to the flood zone. Um, so these are staff initiated uh, requests to amend the regulations. So again, specific to flood zone, which gets really technical really fast. Um, and it kind of gets hard to like, imagine what we're talking about just by looking at text on a paper. Um, but essentially what has happened is in the flood zone, um, we're seeing some folks take advantage of gray area or undefined terms within the regulations and turning um, what's supposed to be areas just for the storage of vehicles or getting access up to the first finished floor of a, a building in the flood zone, what they're doing is they're converting the, that area into finished space. Um, which you are not supposed to be able to do. Um, so what all this red text is trying to accomplish is to clarify that the area, when you are lifting your home to get out of the flood zone, the area beneath your first finished floor is supposed to be strictly just for the storage of vehicles. It has to be unfinished space, non-habitable and to get you from the ground to your first floor. Um, so uh, all this red text um, would be modifying article six of the flood zone.
Brian, can you make it just a little bit larger, please?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so you'll see like getting references to defined terms which hadn't been included before. Um, more specific language saying any level below the lowest floor shall be unfinished area. Unfinished area is a new term, um, which we would define as this, this is pulled directly from FEMA. Um, so uh, it's, it's clearly stating that it is just for the parking of vehicles, building access and storage and it shall not be finished habitable area, which would be another new definition pulled directly from FEMA. Um, so again, just really trying to make it extremely clear that the area underneath the first floor in the flood zone is not to be finished. Um, yeah, it's kind of um, reiterative there. Um, this portion, uh, C, um, so this text here um, is being added because within the flood zone section, A talks about residential construction. Residential construction generally has to be wet flood proofed, meaning it has to be lifted to be BFE plus two. Um, B, which isn't included here because we're not proposing to change it, um, is for non-residential construction, so commercial buildings in the flood zone. Commercial buildings in the flood zone, you do not need to raise to be two feet above BFE. You can do other means of flood proofing it called dry flood proofing, which means um, you could put in like flood gates around the building should a flood event happen that are two feet above BFE. Um, so we had to add in this text into C because C was talking about both residential and non-residential and saying that it had to be flood, wet flood proofed, which isn't necessarily true. Um, so that's where this exemption comes in, espe- essentially just talking about commercial uh, structures. All right, and then um, this was uh, brought up, this is uh, also in article six within the flood zone section. Uh, we put in this requirement that when you are within twenty five feet of the reach of the mean high tide, um, you were not able to construct new substantially improve or repair uh, structures. Um, the problem was is that was preventing people who already had a structure in existence from renovating their existing structure, which wasn't the intent, it, this is mostly to stop you from putting a, a new structure up within twenty five feet of um, what could be uh, uh, coastal resource. Um, so the first change here is to get rid of the reach of the mean high tide language because it's the only way to determine that is to have the property owner hire a surveyor who then uses sort of their best judgment to determine what the mean, the reach of the mean high tide is. So it's kind of like an un uh, def- defined or undefinable term, both for staff and for an applicant until they hire a surveyor to make that call. So we wanted to switch it to the coastal jurisdiction line, which is a defined elevation. Um, it's five point four in Norwalk, elevation five point four is the coastal jurisdiction line that clarifies um, for everybody where we're measuring the twenty five feet from and it's roughly the exact same um, as the reach of the mean high tide anyway. And then we wanted to put in some exemptions. Um, so if you are lifting an existing house to be flood compliant, provided you're not making it, you're not adding like a second story onto it or you're not making it any bigger, you would be allowed to do that. Um, you'd be allowed to do interior renovations to the principal building. Um, and you'd be allowed to put in docks. Um, public access requirements were required, so for example, in like commercial zones like the marine commercial or the CD three W zone. Um, if you're doing a new development, you have to put in like a boardwalk along the water. Um, this would say you could still put that boardwalk in because we're telling you, you have to. Um, and then civic districts, uh, so again, civic districts, maybe the city wants to put a boardwalk in. We want to be able, for the city to be able to do something like that. Then kind of I went down here earlier, this is to amend article nine, add new definitions for unfinished area, unfinished area. And then to make some tweaks to the story definition. Um, again, all in relation to, to flood, flood zone and structures in the flood zone. Um, to clarify that the, the area below the first floor is not to be finished and also that it wouldn't count as a story in certain circumstances. Um, and to modify another definition of the lowest floor to include this updated text or of reference, at least other definitions. So it kind of, you can see how it gets confusing when you have definitions that reference other definitions, that reference other definitions. Um, so I'm hoping that I sat and stared at my screen for an hour trying to put this together and we had staff meetings where we pulled everybody in and had them go over it and we think that this makes sense, so hopefully it does.
Hey, Brian, would you mind going back to the conditions? Um, one of them had to do with the boardwalk?
Yeah.
Um, I'm just thinking about some of the properties that are, are um, available for development and it would seem to me that um, there could be some housing and retail built with the idea in mind of keeping an existing marina uh, operating on the waterfront and most of those marinas with travel lifts um, have exemptions from that boardwalk requirement. Is there um, is there room in this uh, regulation for that discussion?
Yeah, I think what I'll do, Richard, is I'll check, I believe I believe truly water dependent uses like marinas where it could be dangerous to put in a boardwalk or like sort of inhibit the operation of the marina to have it there. Don't have to put the boardwalks in.
That's true.
So so this isn't saying you still, you'd have to put those public. Uh, you wouldn't have to put the boardwalk in because you'd you'd be exempted from having to do that. But I will make sure uh, that this does not impact any sort of marine oper- marina operations as well. I'm not sure if any additional texts might be needed. I'll I'll double check on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Brian, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, thank you. So for residential um, and not having the under the house space be finished, what type of guidelines are there for? What type of walls? You know, there were breakaway walls for a while. There were flood gates for a while. There was lattice for a while. Does the applicant get pick how they want to finish the wall, the exterior walls?
Now, yeah, so so this isn't going to really apply to the exterior wall. So that all gets determined by uh, if you're building a new house and you're raising it and you're putting exterior walls on that first level to lift the house, the architect or the engineer is going to give us a flood certification saying that this material has been approved as a FEMA compliant exterior wall material. Um, and then they'll put the flood vents in so that the water can flow through and they'll show us those calculations and all of that. So this this text will not impact that.
Okay, so somebody can in a residential zone make it look as if it's finished space. It's going to have garage doors, perhaps with flood gates, but it's special material compared to the rest of the house.
Right, so so the inside of it is here, I'll scroll down because I think habitable area has some helpful. So like finished habitable area will say the inside walls can only have twenty linear feet of of essentially drywall or panel paneling, I suppose they call it. But um, that's really all this is talking about is what the inside of that area.
Okay, not the exterior.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate the clarification on these.
No problem.
Uh, next up is uh, acceptance of the minutes. I do have one modification for the minutes as I I believe Lou did withdraw his motion before things adjourned. Is that your recollection as well, Lou?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, so uh, Diana, if we can just make that one alteration uh, to the minute, that's the only thing that's stuck out to me. I just wanted to make sure that was on there. Um, any other um, comments or changes on the minutes? Thank you, Lou. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All right, I think we can do this by a show of hands. All those in favor? All right, all those abstaining? All those opposed? Looks like it passes with two abstentions. Comments of the director and or Brian?
I've got nothing for you.
Okay. Uh, comments of commissioners?
Sheep, and you did an amazing job.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Uh, luckily, Gailen gave me some heads up, so I had a little time to prep ahead of time, so thank you. And thank you, Brian, for running me through things the other day. One thing that Lou brought up earlier that I wanted to revisit was the size minimum for workforce housing. That's something that had crossed my mind before, but I'm curious if other communities do something there and if there's something we should do, like I I like our um, making sure it's distributed. And I'm forgetting the the other condition off the top of my head right now. Uh, but I'm wondering if it makes sense to have a size minimum like five hundred square feet to throw a number out there, but I'm not sure, like that, that was an interesting idea, Lou, and I I liked that.
Are you talking specifically about the workforce housing set aside?
Yes.
Because I I do know that in the Affordable Housing Plan discussion, uh, we were talking about how allowing smaller sized units can increase you know, the affordability, but I'm not sure if that's necessarily, if that would necessarily contradict what you're talking about.
We we would want, uh, at least my intention would be to not contradict that, so I'm I'm glad you mentioned that. So it'd be uh, against the the spirit of it. Any other comments? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Richard moved. Danny seconded all those in favor. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.